I was gonna say, do you? I do. It's like, I got it as part of a wedding.
Oh, sure.
It's like flowers, like it's a floral type.
Good afternoon, everybody. We got everybody here that's going to be here right now. Sarah will be joining remotely. And first item, I guess, is to, we're gonna call us to order, then do the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so on item number three, we're gonna approve the regular agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the regular agenda?
Nope.
Give me a second. I'm gonna ask that we add an item to, after ten, we're gonna talk about country acres in Maple Lakes again. I just want an update.
I can go ahead and make that motion to approve the regular agenda with the addition of, I'll just call it Tennessee, country acres, Maple Lakes discussion.
My second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Give me just a second here, turn that on. If that's what you're asking about.
I was asking if Councilmember White is on virtually.
Not yet. You want me to hold off for a minute?
No, that's fine. I was just for
Okay.
For the motion and stuff.
Alright, so moving on to agenda, item number four, group consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yeah.
And it would be remove number, or oh.
Okay, we're gonna take oh out, put that as its own item, or just take it out?
Oh is a duplicate.
Just duplicate. Okay. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
You want a Brooklyn? Fine.
Sure.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda carries. Item number five, approval of the city council meeting minutes from September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Anything anybody needs to bring up?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Okay, second it. Any discussion at all? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And there's none. Okay, number six, public comment. Does anybody got any comment? Okay, go ahead and come up to the mic, please.
Director Leopold, Sixty-fourth Avenue South, Horace, my wife's back there, Kara. We're listening to your conversation about the Greyhawk addition in your last meeting. We were wondering if we can get something done like that on Sixty-fourth Avenue South.
You wanna shut down Sixty-fourth Avenue?
It's not even a road.
Are you talking like speed bumps?
See, anything. The traffic going by there is sixty-plus. We get dump truck after dump truck after side dump. And semis that go down that road, fifty miles an hour plus, and most of it's not even finished. It's just, people go mudding out there. It's ridiculous.
Okay, in a minute, or not a minute, but a few minutes.
I already talked about it.
Okay. So
Have you been out there?
I have not been out there recently.
Okay. When it rains, people still use that road and they run it all the heck.
I would assume, yeah.
Yeah, there's mudding. There's twelve people that got stuck last winter, six of them knocked on my door for help.
Okay.
Pulled out, borrow a shovel or snowblower. It's annoying.
So, Jim, we, the only thing we've done to that road is just add gravel?
Didn't even do that.
We didn't even do that?
Gravel was on Fifty-seventh South of Sixty-fourth. So, the area east of Sixty-fourth is, east of Fifty-seventh is where it becomes Fargo, and that's, I think, where most of the, where there's not as much gravel there.
Is that still considered minimum maintenance?
I believe so, yeah. I think it's signed outside of the Horace limits.
So, the part that's not finished, that's Fargo?
Yep.
I did not know that.
Right at Sixty-fourth, or Fifty-seventh.
Right after the
There's a gap in there of where Fargo and Horace meet, so that would be Fargo's.
Jase, is there any, was there any way to put this area up on the map? I'm just having a little hard time visualizing it.
One second.
Thank you.
So, right now, all these side dumps that are coming out of there, they're taking fill out of
It's all from the Fargo pile.
Huh?
It's all from the Fargo pile.
So, that Lake Fargo that they're taking out of, is that right? Okay. Do you know where they're going?
Today it was Deer Creek.
So, this is, and then Greg, you're, this one, right?
Yep.
So, it's not really to the east of you, right, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
But the speeds, they carry speeds sixty-plus on the whole road.
Yeah.
Twenty-five mile an hour speed limit with bus stops.
We did, but didn't we put a
You put two signs up.
And then we had some speed limit signs put on there.
If I remember right, yeah, there's twenty-five.
Yeah, just so council knows, we did have some speed limit signs and overweight vehicle signs put out there. Do folks take that? Yeah, they do.
So, the overweight vehicles, if he's saying you have heavy construction equipment out there, are those signs still up, or are they taken down by now?
They're still up.
We keep them up year-round in there.
Can't remember if it's six ton or eight ton.
Six.
I think it's six.
Yep.
Who did you guys, who did you say was taking dirt out of there? You guys know?
I don't know.
It looked like multiple different companies, I mean, today at least anyways.
So, I talked to Craig about some of the, like, the speed issues, obviously, and, and maybe some of the truck issues. Obviously, we can help deal with that as far as closing the road. Because no, that's not up to the sheriff's office to do that. You said it was City of Fargo that's maintaining that road? What was that?
I'd say they're maintaining it.
Yep, is that what you, is that what you said, Brenton?
Well, that's a, it's a minimum, minimum maintenance road.
Does it bother the City of Fargo?
And it would be in Fargo's E.T. Fargo has a little strip of land about where the cursor was at, right there. That is actual city limits of Fargo. Outside of that, it's then the township. But Fargo does, I believe they maintain that, but like I said, it's a minimum maintenance. And they put gravel on the east half-mile closer to Forty-Fifth, so go from Forty-Fifth Street, half-mile east. They did some gravel, if I remember correctly, in that area, basically to help the trucks gain into there, but
And then from Fifty-seventh over to
They didn't continue it over to Fifty-seventh.
They did Fifty-seventh to the drain as part of the detour for Sixty-fourth Avenue around the
Yeah, and then it's mud after that.
Then it's mud to the east of there, yeah.
Yep, it's mud to the east.
And that's, I believe it's
Then they track all that mud, it's a coming west.
Right.
In the
And then mixes it with gravel, and then we have mud gravel. So, yes, cars take it. A lot of people don't use the best judgment when the soil is wet, you know?
I don't, you do speed bumps on a dirt road?
That's what I was trying to figure out.
But if it's to the east, the city of Horace doesn't have any jurisdiction, so I don't know why.
No, but Horace has Fifty-seventh.
Yeah, we could go up to
So
So, you, Craig, would I probably have to approach the township?
You'd almost have, well, if you did block that road, it would probably have to be through Fargo, because Fargo has, what, about two-hundred-foot strip of land, if I remember right, that width? From Fifty-seventh going east, it's around two-hundred feet. Actually, it might, it might widen out, take up more of that section there.
Nobody should be on that road. So, you got a satellite picture by chance?
Yep. It's from twenty twenty-one, but
I'm assuming that the traffic picked up on it because of the seventeen
Yeah, and the road opening.
Turned around and had big shortcuts and stuff.
And the bridge opening.
So, where, where's our, okay, so you have that second house in?
Yep, right there.
Where, Brenton, can you tell me?
Jase can show you the cursor right where you just had the cursor, just to the right. Go to that next thing, yep, right there. So, that's city limits, Horace stops right there, and then Fargo has a strip of land going along Fifty-seventh there, that I believe is around two-hundred feet wide. But anything, the east half of Fifty-seventh, also veterans, it lines up with Veterans Boulevard, that east half is Fargo, not Horace.
Well, I mean, what can be done on a gravel road? And is it us or the township?
Depends on where you put, if you're having any traffic control measures or anything like that, it depends on the location there.
For the City of Horace stuff, it just seems like we just need enforcement of the signs that are already in place as the remedy. There's already speed limit signs at twenty-five miles an hour, and then there's weight restrictions that are on there, so it's, to me, it's just an enforcement-type issue for those that are traveling on the road. I mean, the city has done, have put up signage.
Could we try to get a few more signs up, maybe, but, yeah, enforcement is probably the most practical thing.
Hostile speed lagging out there? Yeah, we can do that, that's not an issue, but I would like to actually help with a couple of deputies out there. So, you said between six and eight, and then five or, yeah.
Five, seven, I should make that.
We can send extra people out there, I mean, we just can't sit out there every day, but we'll try to do those ones just again.
Okay. I'm not sure why it's different than Greyhawk, to be honest, because that's going into West Fargo too.
Well
We have different options of trying to slow traffic down. We don't have the ability to have speed bumps out there. I mean, we can try, but on a gravel road, it's not.
Right.
It's not gonna last, I mean, they'll just get popped out. As far as, I'm not sure what kind of tickets they can hand out out there, if they're destroying a minimum maintenance road. I know farmers down south here have had, asked that people get fined for tearing up a road.
Typically, if we catch them out there, we'll charge them with criminal mischief for damage to the roadway, but it comes down to a couple things, how much damage is done? If we catch them out there, if we don't, then I'm assuming they can probably be cooperating, you know, victim, or witness, I should say.
Yeah, it wouldn't, you know, as far as when they get to the east side of my property, I can't see them on the window because all the I'm looking for anything to slow vehicles down, and the truck traffic is ridiculous.
It's nerve-wracking when the kids are standing out there in the morning waiting for the buses. Like, we've told them they have to stand behind the shrubs, because like, if one of those cars is in control, I mean, who knows where it's going, and the rocks and whatever else, because they're just flying.
Well, can we increase the patrolling?
Yeah, well, I'll
I know you guys are strapped for people, but, I mean, we're having serious issues around Horace right now with traffic. And I feel the residents frustrations with it. It just seems like these longer strips of road, they're like runways. And I, I can't be the police as much as I wish I could help.
You can if you want, if you want a job.
I, I mean
Because we're short people.
I just
Shameless plug.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it's really frustrating for me too, you guys, like, it's heartbreaking, because I, the last thing I want to see is somebody get hurt.
I'm just a little surprised there haven't been more accidents in Horace in general, just with all of the truck traffic and
Yeah, I mean
Yeah.
Thank the Lord that there hasn't been, but, um, do you think you guys could do that, Sheriff John?
Yeah.
And then, do you guys want to just maybe give us an update or something in a few weeks and let us know?
Sarah's the one that wanted us to come in and talk about it, so, yeah, we'll just, when I said people down there, I'll stand and swing in and visit with you, and we'll sit down there and do some different things.
It's a driveway, if you'd like.
We'll see if we can work on it. I mean, is it, I mean, just in reality of everything, right? I mean, we'll come down and try to help you as much as we can. Horace contracts for a person, we can rotate that person up here and there. Obviously, Cass County's a large county, we've got a lot of cities, we've got a lot of complaints all over from different, you know? But we'll work with you as best as we can and try to help you all as well, yeah.
What does it take to get more officers trained or equipped to have a scale truck or rig truck? What does it cost? I mean, be honest.
Brenton's, Brenton's asked me that before. Right now, we have, we have one person certified to do that, and that person is down in Kindred only because they're, they just wanted to work the Kindred contracts. Kindred contracts for an officer, just like you guys do.
Yep.
It's not full-time, it's twenty hours a week. So, when that person is not down there, then they run ways all over the whole county. You know, and that's important for us to be out all over the county, because we have harvest going on.
Oh, understood. So, so what is the cost to get somebody trained up?
To get another person trained up, I don't know what the total cost is, I'd have to go back and figure that out, but we have to send them to school. We have to buy the scales, I think we already have scales, we probably have to get them recertified. And I gotta find someone to do it, because I can tell you that, and people don't like to do it, like our deputies, they don't want to do it.
Why's that?
Just, just don't like that job, they'd rather go over and pick all sorts of service and do that. It's like anything, if I ask, it's like a secondary assignment. So, if I say, does anyone want to work in the scale spot, no one volunteers to do it, no one wants to do it. And if I tell them they have to do it, they'll probably, they'll already short, so.
I mean, I can, I can understand that you guys are strapped for people, and you guys only have this one scale guy.
Yep.
And you have a large county. However, I mean, Horace is one of the largest, fastest-growing communities in probably North Dakota. If you could maybe just talk to them and see if they'd be willing to help us out, anybody wanting to
Well, they could pop up here, here and there, but I can't have them just sit in Horace.
No, I get it, no, I get it. Maybe, like, rotating a little bit more in our area would be really helpful.
We can do that from time to time, but our main concern, obviously, is the whole county right now.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And, you know, we can certainly ask again and see if people want to do it, but literally, no one wants to do the job, they don't, it's just not something they go into law enforcement for.
Yeah.
Just the way trucks, it's just not, it takes a special person to do that, whoever wants to do that, but we're always asking, of course, so. But, yeah, I mean, it's not a problem, send them up once in a while and check on it here and there. So, Brenton's outside, I've stopped before, obviously, you know, I talked about it, so.
Yes, just so you know, I did, Sheriff John and I did talk for a while, even today, and we talked about enforcing presence, we have a third position, trying to get somebody down here. We talked about additional enforcement of just overall traffic concerns, speeds, and no parking in the park, parking and no parking zones. Those are the two main topics that we were discussing. So, he was looking into ways of how to address that or what to do for that. So, we did, we even had that conversation today.
Yeah, it's just hard, because our community is seeing so much change, and it's hard to break habits of
You're having grown things, you're growing, so, I get it. So, Craig, we'll work with you.
Great, appreciate it.
Try to help you out down there as much as we can, so, okay? And then we'll just, you know, maybe after a couple of weeks, I'll swing down, see how things are going or whatever, and see if we can work on anything.
And thank, thank you for coming. Please, please come back, maybe in a couple, a couple sessions or a couple meetings, and then we can kind of reassess.
Okay, I'd also put it on you, if you guys could, I mean, think of something else that could be done as well.
Yep, we can do some brainstorming.
Yep, we definitely will.
Okay. Alright, does anybody else have a public comment? Okay, go ahead and come up to the mic, give me your name and
My name's Andrew Saylor. I live over on Buckthorne Avenue here in Horace, in Lost River Development. And I was following along with some of the stuff from the last meeting with the Maple Lakes development, with Thompson Homes and the drainage issues. And they recently came out and did a patched-together job of finding where they had buried the drain. And so, when all of our houses on the end down there were built, we had no idea where the drain was. And so, I've got, you know, probably three, four feet of the back of my yard that I can't mow, I can't do anything with, because it's just mud. Because none of the yards drained in any coherent way, and Thompson's out there trying to put a Band-Aid on it without fixing it, and so, we're just trying to get somebody to put a little pressure on them, because it's gotta get fixed. I mean, it's, the, my neighbor two doors down, they've got a lake as big as this almost in their backyard.
Can you bring up a map for us, please, Jase?
Yeah.
Have him point out where his house is on?
Yeah.
Yep. So, I am on the, no, down into the left, so there's Buckthorne. I am the top left, or the next one, that one right there, yeah, seven nine one five is mine. So, it's, it's affecting essentially the, I don't see far enough to see down, but I know, like, the six or eight on the end there are all affected by it.
In the backyard?
Yeah.
In the backyard.
Yeah.
Which, which ones are Thompson's? Is it seven nine
I wanna, I wanna say the six, the, minus the two end ones, the rest of my think are Thompson's.
Can you go on Lost River Road, Jase, just the properties to the north of it? So, yeah, right in there, on that, yeah, right there, click that one. No, can you go one over?
Okay, so a letter has been sent
They have been notified on that one.
Okay, then, okay, because I know
They've been sent a letter for seven nine oh three, seven nine oh four, seven nine oh eight, and seven nine eleven.
Okay.
When were the letters sent?
September twenty-second. They have until, so this was gonna be the update later on. Do you want the update later on, or no?
Um, maybe we, should we
Do you want to do it now, Brent?
You just do it now.
Do it now.
It's, they have until October eleventh to remedy it, or show to the city on or before October eleventh to show us that the properties drain properly in designated areas, the storm drains, and failure to do so would be violation of code. And I guess we can't shut off their water because it's casserole, but it would be a code violation at that point. So, they have until eleventh to remedy it, and for the Maple Lakes one, I asked their staff, they said they believe that there was a locate submitted, but wasn't a hundred percent sure if there was, but there were, they thought there was a locate submitted in that area for down Maple Lakes.
Locate for what?
I didn't ask them about Lost River.
What was the locate for?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have much information on that, because I didn't know we were talking about this stuff, but it was, uh, my understanding, what they said is that they believe there was a locate submitted for Maple Lakes area. As for the details of locate, I don't have the information in front of me.
So, when I was out there with the Public Works guys last week, the one house directly behind the person that was here at the previous meeting, at the one house, that sidewalk was not wet that morning. All the rest of the houses in that row were still watering the same.
And they have the letter for Maple Lakes area, they're noticed for one zero two one eight, one zero two two six, one zero two three four, one zero two four two, and one zero two five zero, Burgundy Drive. Those properties are all noticed in the letter for the same
Do they have the same remedy date?
Yeah.
So
Are they taking us seriously with this?
They are. I, I really can't answer where they're at of it, of them, and they have until October eleventh to prove to the city that they've remedied this, so they still have
If they are listening, I would like your residents to be taken care of. I, I think this is absolutely ridiculous.
And maybe, since, since the remedy date is the eleventh, and our next meeting is the sixteenth, maybe we should, maybe we could ask them to come and address it at the next meeting if, 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 if we're still having issues with it. I, I don't know, what do you think with this?
So, the way the letter's drafted, it's drafted, they don't comply by the eleventh, we're gonna consider it a violation of the city's ordinances.
Okay.
And so, it's a nuisance violation that we can then take to municipal court, and say that we've sent this letter, we asked them to stop watering immediately, so it sounds like that's nothing being done, so we should be documenting that from city staff, although if they aren't, or if they, they continue to water.
Yeah, we need to document it.
Until the water's absorbed in the ground, and then after that, we need to find what the, what the solution is. So, maybe if they're doing a locate, they are trying to work on possible grading of the lots, I don't know, speculating.
I know, but if we ask them to, to, like, stop with the watering?
So, we can, we can try to document that, so if they continue to, to water on those properties, then we should write that down, and then, like I said, it's a municipal court-type violation, so we just take action through municipal courts, and if not that, then district court.
I will say that my neighbor, the two neighboring houses that they still own, those have stopped watering, so at least they're doing that. But what does that do for, for me, though? Because they buried it, they buried the drain, so when my builder went to have the yard done, they had no idea where to go. And then whoever did the rest of them just kind of did whatever, and so my yard's gonna continue to flood, because the yard next to mine's higher than mine, but my builder said, well, there should be drainage out here, so we kind of angled it that way, and none of the yards are angled anywhere.
Yeah, so that's, that's why, it's more than just a stop-watering type issue.
Yeah.
And that's what the letter says, you have until October eleventh to show us that you fixed it, because the ordinance says that you have to have adequate drainage if there's a storm, a public stormwater provided, which in this area there was. And I think for all new developments, correct, there's, there's public stormwater drainage provided, so they need to show the city, and so that's, if that is grading the lots to ensure that they
And that'll include
Flow properly.
In the notice, it, my number wasn't, you know, my lot wasn't included in that.
Yeah, the, the lots that were listed are lots that are owned by Thompson Homes, where the excessive watering issue was
Yeah.
Pointed out by the city, or by city staff.
Do you remember where that drain is supposed to be?
I can point out where it's at, where they dug anyway, and put in rock.
Basically, at the ends and in the middle. That one's a little shifted to the west of that, but
Is Joel able to, like, tell these people before they start? I mean, what's, can Joel do anything when he's working with these people?
He's frequently communicating with the builders, contractors, on different issues. Now, we're working towards doing some updates to our ordinances, like building code, and one suggestion I, they brought up with our staff and mentioned with council, one thing it would be doing what's called a four-corner survey, the four-corner survey, you do before and after.
At the last
And that's gonna assure that, that helps assure that the grade is done properly.
When, when can we get that?
That's one of those that, you know, by the time that gets implemented and everything, realistically, by the time it gets implemented, you're gonna be looking at the next year construction season. It's not gonna address this issue right now.
Right, but I do want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for next year, because this is out of control.
Yeah, so that's why we're going through, okay, how can we have assurances that it's done properly? But as this one, we're going through the process, through our ordinances there, we put them on notice. They have until eleventh to prove to us that they have addressed it. If they haven't, then we get, they have to deal with the municipal court.
Can you guys keep us posted on all of that?
Well, yeah, we are now.
Sarah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, we need to take definitive action. I appreciate the letters were sent out, and I think that's a really good step in the right direction. If the eleventh comes and goes, I would like to invite a representative from Thompson to the next meeting. I think that's imperative to open up this discussion. It does not excuse or create any issues with the rights that we have for municipal court, but I think that this needs to be addressed on a bigger scale, not just on an address-by-address basis. How does the rest of the council feel about that?
I would agree, Sarah.
I agree, Sarah.
I agree.
Great.
I, I just want to make sure it doesn't hinder the city's ability to handle that through the legal process, so I don't, Lucas could answer.
I was just gonna make a comment. Before we get to October eleventh, it sounds like they might be taking steps now to try to come up with a remedy, so it might be prudent for someone from the city to reach out to them to ask if they're, if the next step is to, like, if they got the locate, if they are trying to possibly do some grading out there. It'd be nice to have that conversation with them before the eleventh.
Yes.
Absolutely, Lucas. I think we should take a proactive approach and do everything we can to see to it that this work is done by the eleventh. But as a remedy, in the event that it's not, I don't want to ravage our right to have, you know, this go through the municipal court process and obviously continue that conversation. But I agree with you, anything we can do in advance to Um, but I agree with you, anything we can do in advance to prod this along a little would probably be very helpful. Brenton, is there someone that you can assign that to?
Yep, I'll talk with our staff tomorrow.
Thank you.
So from your standpoint, what do you need from us at this point?
I'm, for me, it's getting not just their yards fixed, but my yard has to be fixed as well. I mean, I've been doing what I can, grabbing dirt where I can and trying to fill it in a little bit back there, but if I'm not doing it right, cuz I'm a computer programmer, I'm gonna make it worse. You know, I'm just gonna start flooding my neighbor's backyard even worse, instead of getting it to drain somewhere. So whether it's a Thompson home or not, they're the ones that messed up that whole block.
Who built your home?
ISR homes.
Okay.
So, and so if, if they're the ones that didn't have it right to begin with, we didn't have anything basis to go off of. And so now, I, I think all the yards over there, that anybody who, you know, makes complaints or willing to, or is not having, or is having issues, should be able to submit it and get the work done by them. I mean, it goes back to them, they, they tore out my whole fence earlier this year, and it took them five months to get it done, to get the yard fixed and get the fence put back up in one yard. You know, I, I, I'm sorry, but October eleventh, I don't think it's gonna happen, but they're gonna actually get something done.
So when you say they tore up your fence, who is they?
Thompson homes, they, when they dug the lot next to us, they dug it right on the property line, and my whole fence and yard collapsed in. And they, oh, we'll make it right, we'll make it right. And it was, that was middle of April, I think it was like April seventeenth when it started, and they just finally got everything wrapped up like three weeks ago. So they're, I don't consider them responsible builders at all. And that's, that's my opinion, but I'm just not pleased with them at all. And then when they put sod down, they didn't grade the neighbor's yard properly, so they put sod right on top, and now I've got a drainage ditch right down the side of my yard where all the grass is getting drained away.
And this is adjoining?
Yeah.
Not in addition to alongside?
I would, I would ask Lucas really quick of, Lucas, at what point does this become a civil issue versus a city ordinance issue? Because typically drainage issues holistically, when they get deeper, and I'm not an attorney, I, that's why I asked the attorney of this, but my understanding has been when you start getting it trickling outside of the property causing a nuisance, then it could be more into a civil issue between those two properties and not as much of a city nuisance issue. So I, I would ask, and maybe it takes a little bit of time to look at the situation, because I would just wanna make sure that we're not getting to what is really a civil issue versus ordinance.
Have you spoken with them about your yard and your concerns?
I haven't spoke to them recently about the, when they put the sod down and left the drainage or the backyard.
Did, did you sign off on something saying that the work was completed to your satisfaction?
Nope.
So some of the stuff he's describing is civils.
Correct, and that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Some of the drainage stuff, I mean, we need, we need time to have a conversation with Thompson, let's let their letter run its course, and then we'll just have to develop a game plan after that, but I mean.
And it sounds like you guys are doing the right things, I really appreciate what you guys are doing, I mean, it means a lot to me, and I'll be back in October to see where, where it's at or the next steps are.
And that's all, that, I mean, at this point, that's, we're taking the steps that are outlined under the, the ordinance, so I think we just gotta let it play out and.
I mean, Andrew, have you considered sending them a letter, calling them, telling them?
With the rest of the issues, yeah, I will be, I'll be, I'll be sending them something on the more civil issue.
It might be a timely, it might be a timely time to do that, too. I mean, being honest with that, I mean, they, they know that there's an issue and the city has it addressed, telling them it wanted addressed, it might be good for you to share your thoughts with them now.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't realize you guys had, I had heard about the Maple Lake one or whatever, I didn't realize you guys had sent a, had sent a letter on this one as well. So yeah, I will, I'll follow up with them as well.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Yep, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Anybody else have anything for public comment? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, we have, uh, the sheriff here tonight, actually, which is good.
All right, thank you, members of the commission. As, as you guys probably remember, some of you remember, I travel around every year, do, uh, Castcony Sheriff's Office yearly report um, to all of our cities out in the county, and so, um, just starting to do that right now, and you guys are, this is the second month where I've attended, uh, city council meetings, so, um, again, this is the yearly report for the whole sheriff's office, for the whole county. And this will give you a good idea about resources that we have available throughout the county, and you guys are a little bit unique cuz you contract with, we'll talk a little bit about you guys. So I guess the first thing I would ask everyone is, does everyone know what the difference is between the sheriff's office and like Fargo Police Department, West Fargo Police Department?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got jurisdiction over the whole county, and of course, those entities can just stay in their respective areas where they've been hired to work. And so, um, you know, sometimes we'll get asked about, you guys, can you guys patrol the city of Fargo, can you patrol the city of West Fargo? We can, um, but based on the fact that they have police departments there, we try to concentrate our resources out in rural areas so that, just because a lot of the towns out in rural areas don't have enough money to have their police, their own police department, so, okay? And then as the sheriff, I'm an elected, uh, person, so every year I run for my position, and I would just tell you that I think of the sheriff position as the greatest law enforcement position that anyone could have, cuz I worked directly for the people of Castcony, there isn't anyone that has oversight over the office other than the voters of Castcony, okay? Um, and then along with that is, the sheriff is responsible for overseeing and maintaining the Castcony jail. There's one jail in Castcony, and the sheriff is responsible for that, and we'll jump into that when I get to that, but the jail's in bad shape right now, so I'll talk a little bit about it. Um, so Castcony encompasses one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square miles, and there's twenty-seven cities within Castcony. Um, that includes, um, the cities of Fargo and West Fargo, so a lot of cities, um, that we are responsible for patrolling in a large, uh, square mileage area that we're responsible for patrolling. Our annual budget, when I started, I, the budget starts from when I began my, I'm a sheriff, which was in twenty nineteen. Um, our, but our annual budget was nineteen million, and for the first three years, we were somewhat able to balance that and kinda stay the same. And then in twenty twenty-two, we jumped up by three million, and that was because we added in a new intake area onto our booking area at the jail. We're experiencing some intake issues with the size of that, and, um, some of the detox, um, services that we, that we provide in that initial booking area. And then in twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-three, excuse me, opened up by two million, and that was for some additional staff that we needed in, in relation to medical services at the jail. And then in twenty twenty-four, we added some additional employees, so that was the, the cost of that, as, as our communities keep growing, our population keeps growing, uh, we, we need to add different people at different times, so, um, that is our current budget projection going into twenty twenty-four approved budget, I should say, at this point. The jail, of course, is a big chunk of our budget, it takes a lot of, a lot of money, and most people don't know this, but we have approximately thirty-five employees at the sheriff's office. Um, when we're in the process of adding a new, new pod onto the jail right now, it'll take a year to be done, we'll be around two hundred and fifty employee positions. So we are the, we're the largest, um, law enforcement agency, not swarm wise, but just total employees in the state of North Dakota. Um, as far as sworn officers, we've got a hundred and twenty of those, a sworn officer is an officer that can go and perform law enforcement functions. The other, our, other rest of our staff are correctional officers who aren't sworn peace officers, okay? So we'll, I'll give you a breakdown of that here in just a minute, but correctional officers, we have fifty-six, sheriff's reserve officers, um, fifteen, and support staff approximately forty-four. Okay, so patrol officers, we have four patrol officers, and that includes our school resource deputies, okay? So, um, if you think about the size of our county and how many cities we have, that's not a lot, especially when you're breaking things into shifts.
I'm sorry, say that, I'm sorry, say that again, your patrol officers are also the resource officers?
Um, no, included in this number is, in this thirty is also our school resource deputies. So we have, so a marked patrol car, we have thirty of those, and part of that number is also including our school resource deputies.
Are they at the schools all day?
Yes.
How many of those do you have?
We have a full-time, I was gonna, I'll get, I was gonna get to it, but we'll just talk about it now. Uh, we have a full-time school resource deputy in Tower City, one at Northern Cast, one at Central Cast, one at, um, Kindred, Kindred just went full-time, and then we have twenty hours that are provided to the Mapleton School. And those deputies are there because the school pays to have them there, so, okay? You guys, of course, have West Fargo out here, it's also under the West Fargo School District.
Yep.
So that's included in that, that thirty number, so if we, if we take those out of there, okay, we've got twenty-five people out patrolling the whole county on different shifts, that's not a ton, um, but that's what our budget allows. So, um, that's why when we were talking earlier about assisting with, uh, the traffic complaints, and I was asking Craig, like, what would be the most times or the beneficial times to be out there, so that we can kinda concentrate on the times when these have the problems, because we gotta rotate our deputies around the whole county to address other concerns that people have as well, so. Um, we have seven investigators, eight deputies who have just served civil warrant, civil process and warrants. Um, does everyone know what a civil process paper is?
Yep.
And that would be like a small claims action, um, if Paul's subpoenaed to go to court, our deputies will locate him and give him his subpoena, he might get witness or something, right? Um, if Matt's got a, uh, hey, I don't believe in it, if Matt is, uh, if Matt, Matt has, um, has filed a small claims action against someone and has paid the court to do that, then we would go serve those papers to the other party as well, so the sheriff's responsible for doing that in central court. Um, court security, I've got eighteen of those, and so the Castcony courthouse, as the sheriff, I'm responsible for providing courtroom security to all the court actions that go on every day. So I've got deputies in there in the courtrooms, that's part of our job duties, those individuals also transport people back and forth from the jail over to court every day. So that's, those are those eighteen. Um, then we have a sheriff's roster and reserve, so those are extra deputies that don't work here every day, they have other jobs, but they come and help us on the weekends, so it might have been maybe, we've got some Fargo officers that worked for Fargo PD at one time, and then they didn't wanna do law enforcement anymore, so they left that and went and worked in the private sector, but they still have a peace officer's license, and they came and said, hey, I'd like to still do law enforcement functions from time to time, so we take their license and activate it, and they might be the ones that come out and work for street gangs out here on the weekend. So that's what that sheriff's reserve roster position is, and then of course ninety in the jail. Um, our mission, vision, values, I'm not gonna read that verbatim, but, um, you know, just some highlights, obviously, we're, our mission of our office is to enhance public safety by building strong community partnerships and department partnerships with other agencies and providing excellent customer service. And, um, you know, down here, there's some of the terms that we, that we expect our, our deputies to abide by every day when they go out. And so literally, this is kinda the roadmap, so when our guys are out working, I tell, you know, this is the main thing, I tell them to make sure that you're following the mission, vision and values of the organization, right? And to, to me, reasonable, reasonableness is a big term for us and accountability. So what I, what I mean by reasonableness is when our deputies are out and they're making decisions, um, every day I have, I ask them, if something comes up or someone calls in a complaint, and I say, do you think it was reasonable? You know, would a normal person think that was reasonable, one of our citizens in that, for example, someone driving a hundred and twenty-one through a forty mile an hour zone, right? To catch a speeder, that was maybe going ten miles over the speed limit. Did our deputies put more people at risk by their driving by behavior than what the person that was going ten miles an hour was doing? Was that reasonable, was that a reasonable decision? So, and that's how we, you know, look at different things that our people are involved in. They're always being professional, and that we have accountability, so. Um, all right, so getting into some of our contracts, as you guys know, the city of Castleton, they contract for two full-time deputies, and they're provided eighty hours a week. Um, you guys have two full-time right now, so you're provided eighty hours a week. Um, the city of Kindred has one half-time deputy, so they get twenty hours a week. And the city of Mapleton contracts for a quarter-time deputy, so they get ten hours designated a week, uh, to their respective cities. Um, we'll talk about how much those contracts are here in just a minute. This right here, when, again, when I, I started my term in twenty nineteen, these, this was our average calls for service per year, this is over the whole county. So a call for service is someone calling something into dispatch that they want our deputies to check on, or it could be an officer initiated calls for service. It could be a deputy driving into the city and telling dispatch that they're gonna get out of their car and walk around and check business doors and make sure that businesses lock their, their business and they don't get burglarized. That could be a call for service. So in twenty nineteen, we're at seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty, and you can see how that's grown to, I, this is through today's date, like this is most current numbers, I have my guy give me those before I went out today. Twenty twenty-three, we're at thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety already, okay, up to October first. This is where we stand compared to other agencies, so Fargo PD, of course, is at seventy-one thousand six hundred and sixty-one, of course, they've got a higher population. Uh, West Fargo PD's at twenty-five thousand one hundred and seven, and again, we're at thirty-one, so we're six thousand over them. Our PD's at twenty-five thousand, and Clay County Sheriff's Office is at eighteen. So our calls for service are definitely jumping up, and that's attributed to our, obviously, the population increase in Castcony. So that's, those are large numbers. All right, and there's the, there's the numbers for your contracts, so, um, if you have two full-time deputies, the city pays a hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen now. Obviously, that's a pretty good deal, um, in my opinion, because the, you guys are paying for the deputies' salary and benefits, and the county in turn is paying for the equipment to, everything to outfit, that's not cheap. That's about eighty thousand, eighty, eighty-five thousand to equip one patrol vehicle with all the stuff in it. That's buying the vehicle, scraping it, putting the computer in there, the deputy put on a uniform, you know, buying a service weapon, everything that I have on the TASER, um, having a license in their car to run things on the computer, all those things cost money, okay? So, um, if they, if you had one full-time person, it would be above ninety-six thousand, so. And then our school resource deputies, I already told you where we have those, and then how that's funded, same thing, the school pays, it's a little bit different pay schedule, but the, the school pays to have our deputies, um, in those schools, and again, it's a cost here with, with Castcony government. And as far as I know, we're the only county in North Dakota that, um, the county pitches in and helps put school resource deputies in the schools. So we're pretty fortunate that way, cuz those relationships are super important. Okay, um, so the jail, you can kind of ignore this if you want, and you can look at that, but I only have the numbers through twenty twenty. But the jail's in really bad shape right now. About a year ago, we started seeing higher increases in population, and we were running up to our threshold of being overpopulated. The capacity, the current capacity of the jail right now is three hundred and forty-eight, and then you can add ten onto that to three fifty-eight for our booking area. Okay, but those aren't permanent housing cells, those are for just when people come in and they get booked in, they're in those areas for a short time, and then they go back to general housing if they're staying there. We have been going into the weekends with three hundred and forty-five people a week, leaving us three beds for the whole weekend. What do you guys think it is on average every weekend, how many people do you think are arrested on average in Castcony? Anyone wanna take a guess?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty to forty, that's your guess, thirty to forty on average every weekend, I'm going into the weekends with three beds available, okay? That's with me having twenty-five inmates, I have other jails right now, having another fifteen on community supervision, which means they're not coming to the jail, but they're in my custody, they're wearing an ankle bracelet, and I have people that go check on them every day, those people aren't at the jail, and having approximately five people at the state hospital. So we are way over diversity. Now, we aren't the only ones that are like that, um, the state pen right now is housing people that are state pen prisoners in McKenzie County Jail because the state pen doesn't have room. When someone is sentenced to three hundred and sixty-five days or more, then they go to the state pen. If they're serving their sentence and it's under three hundred and sixty-five days, they stay at the jail. Okay, we're building another pod, it's gonna give us another hundred and ninety-two beds, but it ain't gonna be done until a year from this spring. When that opens, that's probably gonna be half full already. So I'm just giving, painting the picture, and now we're lucky because Castcony government used, um, ARPA funds and CARES dollars to build the jail. The cost of the new jail is thirty-four million, and that was covered. The cost of the new jail is thirty-four million, and that was covered with those funds, so we didn't have to go to taxpayers and ask to increase their taxes to get to jail. We got lucky there this time, but I'm gonna guess that when that opens, I'm gonna probably have to start asking the commission again to look at adding smaller room already, because it took me about a year and a half to convince the commission to get this one done, because it's a lot of money, obviously, right? It's not just five hundred thousand dollars here, so. So we're in that jail, what does that mean? That means that when people are arrested sometimes on the weekend, if they have misdemeanor charges and they don't have a violent criminal history and their charges aren't violent, they're not being brought to the jail when they normally would be, they're given a court aid out on the street and told to come back two weeks later and go to court for it, because there's no room. I gotta leave those beds open for people that are committing violent offenses. So I just give everyone a reality check here, that it's not good. And I have many sleepless nights of people not coming into the jail, because guess whose responsibility that is if they don't, if they're not allowed in there? The sheriff of Gas County, because they're remanded into my custody. And I don't have a choice, so. If we go over that three forty-eight, DOCR, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, that oversees the state pen, will come in and shut the jail down, because there's, people can only be in so much square footage. If we have a cell that has one bunk in it and has so much square footage in it, if I put two people in there, they'll, you can't do that. The cell's to be big enough for two people, it's, there's a lot of rules with it, so. That make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
It's not a good situation, so. All right, some of this stuff I'm gonna skip over, because that's what I just talked about, I just had it in slides and rather than reading out the slides, so I just have a couple pictures in here, I'll let the inside of the jail looks like right now. All right, so warrants received, these are how many warrants we take in every year, people that don't show up for court. I don't have twenty-twenty-three yet, and then here's this amount of civil process papers that our guys serve every year. Court hearings, how many court hearings? I don't wanna do this for three hours, so. There's some things. All right, so this thing, this is our crimes in Gas County, so obviously, every year, our highest amount of crimes are always thefts. Let me see Larson C, Larson C here, excuse me. That's always our highest number, that's people stealing other people's property, okay? There's a number of things that we can all do as a group to try to minimize this number. I mean, we get people that have cars stolen a lot, where they, people just left their keys in their car. You know, and we're not in a, unfortunately, we're not in a small area anymore, we're in a big area, and people gotta lock their stuff up, so, okay? This one here looks a little alarming, pornography and obscene material, and that one's, you can see, has gotten higher. The reason that is, is because I've assigned someone to our ICAC task force. ICAC stands for Internet Crimes Against Children, and we never had anyone on that task force before, but I assigned someone to there last year, and so that, unfortunately, is really busy. And that person is doing a lot of cases, and so the reason that the number's higher is because I actually have someone that's spotted now and they're investigating them. So although the number looks high and that's not good, it's good because of the fact that they're getting investigated now and not showing up in the numbers, so, okay? But as we all know in here, technology is a big piece right now. We gain a lot of, a lot of good things from putting someone in that position. Number one, they get a lot of extra training on how to download cell phones, look through cell phones, keep up on apps, computer technology to investigate that stuff, because not all of our officers get that training. And as everyone knows in here, there's a lot of apps out there, where people are trying to take advantage of our children, so. And if you don't know how to recognize that stuff, it's hard to investigate it, so. Okay, then we got two canines, as everyone knows, if these, in order to get these canines up to working capacity is really expensive, it's about twenty grand per dog to start a canine program. We've been very fortunate, because we had Shields partner with us, they gave us money for one of the dogs. And then we also had Griggs Communications down by, near Kindred, they gave us the money for the other dog. So actually, this didn't cost the taxpayers any money, it was money donated by those entities so that we could start two canine programs, so we're really lucky that way. We also have a community outreach dog that will be starting here over the next month, and the purpose behind that dog is for that deputy to take that dog to our schools and interact with children and make children feel comfortable talking to our deputies. It's also a little bit to blow to him, and that deputy will go out to the great companies and stop in businesses and visit with people. And as we all know, a lot of people like dogs, so that helps sometimes people for us to bridge that gap in communication with people and build those important relationships. And that dog was also donated to us, so we'll be releasing that over the next month to see that in the media. We'll be press releases on that. All right, let's see here, any other crimes against children? Of course, we've got someone assigned to our Mentor Area Street Crimes Unit, our Gas County Truck Task Force. So those are other resources where we have staged in different positions. Some of the stuff that they've been seizing, those are M thirty pills. A lot of the pills that are responsible for the overdose deaths in our area, mostly Lasebo Fentanyl, Carfentanil. Of course, we have people assigned to the bomb unit under Valley SWAT. So there's some of our search and rescue equipment that we have available in our office, we've got two airboats, and we've got two snowmobiles, so obviously, the airboats can be used for a lot of things, it can be taken on water, it can be driven in the snow, and it can actually be used over dry land, whether it or not. And those were given to us by the state of North Dakota, we got two of them, they're about a hundred thousand dollars per unit. And we got those from the state of North Dakota when they were having floods. They said, we'll buy these boats for you in agreeance that you will go anywhere in the state and help if someone's having a flood, that you will allow your staff to go help. And I said, Sheriff Lenny at the time said, yes, I was the airboat commander, I said, most definitely, let's do that, that's a win-win for us. We're gonna get two free resources to increase our search and rescue capabilities in Gas County, so why wouldn't we not do that? So we did that, and we've had to go deploy to a few, to some different parts of the state a couple times, but not very often, so it was really a win-win for us. And then that's our, which our response, we showed you guys before, and now we really just added that into our remember target, because we've had some issues in the whole of the past winters, getting people during calls for service. There was actually a call for service that happened south of Horace, a domestic, husband and wife, wife was locked in the bathroom, husband was trying to kick in the door, he had their small child in the bathroom, and it was during a blizzard one night, and we couldn't get to him with our patrol vehicles. And I had to call the county road department, two officers rode down there to get to the, to the individuals, and it took us an hour and a half to get there, and she was obviously very frightened for an hour and a half, and I told the commissioners, this can't happen, when people call nine-one-one, they're expecting that we're gonna show up and help them, and we're gonna get to this person, how was the elbow's feeling? So they gave us this old county road department truck that only had seventy thousand miles on, that's totally fine. We don't need anything new, we don't use it all the time, but it was still a very useful truck. And so they gave us that, it just stayed within Gas County government, and they, all they did was buy us the plow, we already had snowmobiles, so we put the snowmobiles on back, and now we'll go as far as we can with that truck with the plow. And if we can't go any farther, then we'll download the snowmobiles and use those to go on the rest of the way, and we had to do that twice last winter, use the snowmobiles, so. And we do have a motorcycle, two of them actually, two Harleys. They don't get utilized all that much, because there's obviously a limitation in the fact that if our guy stops someone on a traffic stop and the person has an outstanding warrant to, we're gonna bring them to jail, we have to call another patrol unit there to transport him, because when I asked my guys, well, why don't you just handcuff him and throw him on the bike with you and ride him into the jail? They didn't like that, they didn't wanna do that. So then I said, okay, how about if I get you a sidecar? And they didn't wanna do that either, so now, so they're kind of somewhat limited. That'd be quite the picture, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Handcuffed and riding him. Okay, so last thing here, and then I'll just turn it over for you guys to question. So I go around and I teach a lot of active shooter, active threat classes to their businesses in Gas County and to our schools. When I went taught at a business in Fargo, I won't use the name, because they asked if I wouldn't. The lady that sat in the front of this business said, Jesse, I'd like you to look at this photo, and so she showed me this photo. So this was taken on July second at twelve twenty-seven PM, so it's summertime, July, it was really hot that day, about ninety degrees. This person's wearing coveralls and a ski mask, so just by everyone's raising their hand, I'd like everyone to participate in this. How many of you guys think this is suspicious, given the time of day and where it happened? Everyone knows, right? Okay, awesome. So she's sitting at her front desk, and she sees this person walking across the parking lot, and she gets a couple of the other workers, and she says, hey, look at this. And they watch this guy walk across the parking lot, and he disappears. And shows, and so she shows me the picture, and she tells me about it, and I said, well, did you guys do anything? And she said, no, we didn't, no, we didn't do anything. And I feel kind of bad about it, and I said, okay, well, hey, can I take this picture and use it as a training? Picture, and she said, yeah, I'm just gonna use our business. My question is, we all raised our hands and thought this was suspicious, right? Okay, so why do you guys think someone wouldn't call this in? What do you guys think?
Maybe waste of time if it wasn't anything bigger.
Okay, not sure what it was, right? Okay, what else? What else do you guys think?
There's a lot of weird people out there.
Okay, so maybe it's some weird people out there, okay? Maybe the, my, the first thing that popped in my mind is, and maybe it's because I was doing this job for a little while, maybe the person didn't feel comfortable with recording it, because they'd never reported anything before, they didn't know how to do it, and maybe they didn't know how to contact a person that reported, okay? Or they were thinking to themselves, I don't wanna bother the law enforcement, because I've heard that a lot. I've heard people have called to me and said, hey, Jesse, you know what, I was gonna call this in the other day, I don't wanna bother you guys, I know you're really busy. So just real quick on that note, you're not bothering us if you call and report something, because guess what? It actually takes more resources on the backend if we don't get called right away, because then we have to, I have to put investigators in here, and we have to go collect videos and try to figure out who this person is, and that takes a lot of time, as opposed to if we would've just went there right away and dealt with the person, it would've just taken probably a car. So now, I don't know where this person came from, I don't know where they're going, I don't know if they did something, I don't know if they're going to do something, or maybe there's a mental health issue going on, I don't know. But if they didn't call that in, what does this become? Someone else's problem, right? And we're just kicking the can down the road. So we gotta call stuff like this in. So real quick, I'm gonna have everyone take out their phone, everyone in here? Okay, now I'm gonna give you a phone number, because I want everyone to feel, you already have it, so that's good. I want everyone to feel comfortable with calling things in and knowing what number to call. So everyone knows you can call nine-one-one, but I'm gonna give you the direct line, non-emergent dispatch number. So if you're gonna put it in your phone, just put it in as dispatch, non-emergency number. Okay, and that number is seven zero one, four five one, seven six six zero. Seven zero one, four five one, seven six six zero. Okay, now, real quick, if you're gonna call that in, here's how easy it is. Number one, you're gonna have to know what? The address of where the incident's happening, and then what's going on, right? That's what you're gonna report. So, hey, this is Jesse, I'm at three eleven Thirteenth Avenue South, I'm working at this business, I work at the front desk, and we just had someone walk across the parking lot wearing coveralls and a face mask. I thought it was a little strange, because I work here every day and I don't usually see that, and it's hot outside. Would you be willing to send a officer over here to check on the individual to make sure they're okay? Does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
Okay, and we're gonna be some follow-up questions dispatch might ask you. Do you think?
What direction are they heading?
Direction of travel, crossroads, okay, crossroads. How long ago was it when this happened? So we have a, you know, if there's a time delay in there? What were they wearing, were they male, were they female, did they have a weapon? Right, pretty basic, they're just gonna ask you some follow-up questions. So I think that's really why people don't call things in, is they're not sure who to call, and they might be a little nervous about it, okay? So I don't want you guys to feel that way, I want them to feel comfortable with calling things in. All right, that's the end of my slide, does anyone have anything off of that? Any questions on that? Okay, all right, regular questions for me, because you got me down here tonight. So obviously, you mentioned concerns with traffic issues, right? All right, Craig, we know he's got some issues down at his place, and we'll work to help him out on the enforcement side of things. The road closing and things like that has to be done at a, you know, at a different angle, but we'll help deal with the enforcement stuff, okay? So what, what's on your guys', what are you guys thinking, or what's on your mind, or do you have any questions for me?
Well, I just wanna say, I've been to one of your active shooter training, and I thought it was amazing. So if there are any residents that are watching later or listening now that own a business or anything, I'd like to put a plug in there, that I've been to Sheriff Johnner's training on that, I thought it was very beneficial. It was actually very eye-opening to me, the things that I never even thought of, safety-wise. So I really do appreciate that you're doing that in our community. Just a few weeks ago, there was a possibility of a shooting here in Horace at the school, as you know, which was absolutely frightening to me, and I just.
And we did have extra people down here, so I don't know if Craig or Jake mentioned that to you, when we have stuff like that, so.
It was noticed, there's been a couple of them.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna let you guys know that the, it gets a little tricky when it's the west, when it's down here. And the reason is, is because we've got a few more people involved, right? We've got West Fargo PD, which we have a great relationship with, and then it's down here, and we have the West Fargo School. So typically, if we have something out in, like, you know, northern Castor, everywhere, we go try to get the information out. When it happens at the schools, it's kind of up to them to get the information out. We're always gonna do our part and put extra people here on the, on the second one that you guys had, I was down there even myself. So we're always gonna do that, as we have, as a, and make sure we have extra resources. But I appreciate your, your comment, same.
Yeah, it was.
I do remember you being in there.
Yeah.
I've been to one as well, I was like, it's.
It's very informative and helps people just think of different scenarios, and honestly, if there are any people who own businesses, I highly recommend that you reach out to them to do that. And then I also wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to tell you that I really enjoy having Craig and Jake out here. They are, they are awesome to have out here, and they work very hard, and they feel like family. So just wanted to put a plug in there, so that you can let them know that we really appreciate them out here.
Yeah, no, I do, I've gotten that feedback from different people down here, and I do appreciate that, because we don't always hear that stuff back, so. I most certainly will relay that in the past, so I appreciate that. They do do a good job, I know Craig, I was talking with Brenton earlier, Craig was, you know, I hear him obviously in the radio, and he was doing a lot of traffic down here this morning, so I know they're busy, pretty active, so. But you guys are obviously a growing city down here, and when you have growth, you're gonna have additional problems, you know, that you're, that you're, some of those that you're experiencing, so. Our job is to try to work with you to figure, see if we can get those figured out. Brenton calls us on a regular basis, and he has different concerns from different times that we try to work on together, but I guess really, at some point, you know, what he mentioned to me today was, you know, what he has might be looking at in the future, so as far as additional ideas of enforcement and resources and things like that, so that might be something that, you know, we need to probably think about having a more serious discussion on in the future. I don't know if tonight's the right thing to do that, but. But anything else, any, how else can we help you guys, or?
I appreciate the slides and going through it, I mean, it's easy for us to sit here and say, we need you, we need you. Just putting into, putting it into perspective really helps. I, I'm not gonna lie, it's a little scary, some of the information that you gave, just knowing how strained you guys are with certain things, but we appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would love to have a lot more people, but you know, we gotta make sure that we're be explicitly responsible to.
And I really appreciate you taking your time tonight, this is really interesting and valuable information for us and the residents, so I really appreciate you coming.
Yeah, and just, you know, let Brenton know what we'll try to do, continue to do more enforcement. Is there certain times, other than what Craig gave me, that you guys are having, see any issues on anything?
So just to recap what I've.
That was, that was, forgive me, that was my question, this is there on the other end, and Jesse, we hear you. I think you hit the nail on the head about having discussions about next steps as our community grows. I would like to nail down sometimes for that. I would like to nail down sometimes for that. And I know that myself and probably a few other council members would be very interested in being a part of that. So, Brenton, I'm sure that's where you're going here with the next conversation. But, yes, this was an excellent presentation and really gives us an idea of where we're at today, where you're at, where we need to go, and what we need to start planning for in the future.
So, what I was gonna bring up is some of that, but it was just to remind me of council, the areas that staff recently has brought up with Sheriff Johnner and his staff have been, a lot of the frustrations that we get at the staff level and from residents have been traffic in neighborhoods, like we heard tonight about speed. You know, that's not uncommon, just in certain neighborhoods, it's happening all over. Enforcement ordinances, like the traffic, no parking, that's been another one. And trying to get, you know, making sure the contractors know, you know, if it's signs saying no parking, it means no parking. You can go park on the other side of the street. Typically, we've been doing no parking on one side, not both. As much of just trying to work with folks there. And, really just if there's any other miscellaneous type things. But those, we've had a few odd ones. We had a boat trailer that somebody cut the tongue off the front of a boat trailer. Stolen boat, filled it with tires also, and then it was left on one of the same streets. And so we were working with the sheriff's office on that and pushing the, let's get this taken care of, get this out of the way. And trying to get that done, trying to manage it, just because, you know, we can't have that stuff just staying out there on our streets and stuff. It was, my understanding was a stolen boat.
Yep.
So...
Winter's coming.
Yeah. So, but anyways, those are just some of the different examples and just asking, hey, can we find ways to start pushing this stuff a little bit more and being more aggressive of, you know, warn people, give them a heads up, try to educate, but at the same time, if you've educated somebody so many times, then yeah, start pushing them a little bit more.
Time for enforcement. We do have one thing that we're working on right now internally is just trying to assign someone, trying to look and see based on our contracts if we need to designate more of a supervisor to just the contracts. So that there's more of a conduit for your guys' concerns to that person. I mean, certainly Brenton can always call me. But, as I'm trying to run four divisions, sometimes it takes me a little while to catch up on the information because I'm not out all the time. So, me sometimes transferring that to a patrol sergeant would know if our guys are dealing with that on more of a day-to-day basis than I would know, right? Because I don't know those things, then what am I gonna do? I'm gonna go down and talk to the person and say, hey, get this public or whatever, we'll use that as an example. And I might not know that our deputies talked to you two days before that because they're out working the street every day. So, I'm trying to streamline some communication so we don't have some misses there. And I think that's gonna probably constitute us as we're going, having someone just in charge of the city contracts as more like a sergeant or something. That's more of a direct conduit for information sharing and stuff, so... So we're just trying to do some tweaks that way.
And if there are priorities that I didn't touch base on, you know, you're giving feedback tonight, but if there are, please let me know. Be great up to the deputies, but also I encourage you to let me know and I can relate to Sheriff Johnner. So here's it, if it's a concern you want to bring up during the meeting or outside of the meeting, let me know. And I could pass it on and say, hey, here's the concerns or here's the feedback I'm hearing. Because I will pass on feedback I'm hearing of. Or there's people writing stop signs, you know, maybe to the deputies or it may be to Sheriff Johnner and ask him to, you know, just take a look at it and see what they do or can do, so...
Any citizens have any questions for me? Craig's just like, I need to see your guys tomorrow. Anyone, do you have a lot of people listeners online? Is there anyone on there that has a question for me or anything?
Oh, this is just Sarah. Sarah, do you have any other questions?
No, just my sincere thanks to Jesse and his officers that give us just tremendous support. We appreciate you all, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the manhole adjustments project. And Jim, is gonna be covering that?
Yes, City Council. So, a couple of, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, we brought forward a plan to do overlays on Lost River Fifth Edition, Southdale Farms First, Southdale Farms Third Editions. So, due to the lateness of the year, I've been talking to some contractors and they figured that if we do bid out some projects now for next year work, we're gonna get some fluff factor built into that. So they actually recommended bidding them later on, or earlier next year, later this year, not right now because oil prices are just kind of fluctuating right now. So, with that being said, there are 10 manholes and 18 gate valves that need to be modified before winter so we don't tear up more snowplows. So, we did reach out to Furuseth Construction, who does a lot of manhole adjustments for the paving contractors. They were supposed to have us a quote yesterday, this afternoon, but vacation last week and they didn't get to it today. So tomorrow morning is what they promised us earlier today. But I'd rather not wait another two weeks to bring this in for you. So, traditionally, they've been about a thousand dollars per manhole and seven hundred fifty dollars or so per gate valve. So with that being said, we have 10 manholes at a thousand dollars, 18 at seven hundred and fifty. So, about twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. I'm asking for kind of a cap on that or just not to exceed maybe twenty-five thousand dollars for this work to get it done before winter and while the asphalt plants are still open. So, we would get a quote from them and provided it's under that, we would go with that. And if it's not, we would just have to pare some things down and maybe some of the bad ones wouldn't get done, but at least the majority of the bad ones would get done. So, don't tear up the snowplows this winter.
Okay. Questions?
Just, what's our funding source?
So this one, as we talked about before, there's some money left over in the districts and then there's sales tax for infrastructure was being used. And I don't know which bucket the finance guys want to take out of, but it'd be one of those two sources.
Okay, any other discussion?
I will make a motion to prove not to exceed, you said twenty-five thousand for the manhole adjustments project?
Manhole adjustments and gate valve, manhole gate valve adjustments, yep.
Yep, that.
Jim, is twenty-five thousand enough or do you wanna go up to twenty-six? Are you pretty confident in the pricing?
So what I had was, I had a little bit of extra in it at twenty-three five, so I think another twenty-five hundred on top of that, or fifty hundred on top of that would be just fine. So twenty-five thousand should be just fine.
Okay, my motion's not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Perfect. I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving on to number nine, N D C A R S. We got Jase Hellman to talk about that.
So, members of the council, bringing this for you tonight after some discussion with Councilmember Brooklyn about some different ways that we can get our community involved in some of the programs that the state has. And the first one we have taken a look at is the North Dakota C A R S Community Program. Essentially, this was created as an extension of the North Dakota C A R S Group to strengthen accessible, seamless network of support for service members, veterans, families and survivors, or S M V F S for short. And the North Dakota Community Program, our North Dakota C A R S Community Program will create a welcoming and supportive environment across North Dakota for S M V F S, increase awareness of local and state support for S M V F S, and include every city in our state, no matter how large or small. And then establish local events and other activities to educate the community and to honor those folks and serve as North Dakota's involvement in adjoining community forces and community military covenant programs. So what we're asking tonight is just to direct staff to form a North Dakota C A R S Committee, our North Dakota C A R S Community Program Committee. And that's a part of our application status that we need to put in place in order to apply to become a North Dakota C A R S community. And once we create a local steering committee and get that group established, we'll be coming back to you with a resolution of support that we'll ask council to provide. And all of that will be included as a part of our application to do that. That will include some signs that get put on to our N D D O T signs. And part of it is just kind of building awareness and creating some supportive events, some stuff we already do just to honor veterans and their families. So, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that or...
I, when I was at the League of Cities a few years ago, it wasn't at this last session, but a few years ago, I was up at Bismarck with the League of Cities. And I had stopped at one of these, what do you call them, vendors?
Vendor booth, yeah.
Yeah. And they were visiting with me about the North Dakota C A R S program. And I don't know if you guys have noticed, some, when you enter into some communities, they actually have the North Dakota C A R S sign listed or shown where they have their welcome to whatever town, whatever community. I really wanted to get us on the map for that because, like Jase said, we are currently in our community already doing things like placing the flags on the poles. I think they have, the Lions Club does some things in the community. I know that they do the ceremony out at the cemetery. So there are things that we are already doing. And I thought it would be a good thing to get Horace on the map for that and just show our appreciation for these service members. They have a special place in my heart. All of my uncles, my dad, they have all served in the military. And we owe them. So, I thought it would be nice to do something for the community and was hoping to get your guys' thoughts.
Yeah, I really like it. I'll be honest, I hadn't heard of it. And so I'm glad you guys brought it forward for review, I really like it.
I agree. This is something I think we could easily do. Go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, you're fine. North Dakota C A R S is a wonderful program. Naomi, I'm very familiar with the signage and have the honor of having several family members that are in the military currently, along with a long line all the way back to the Civil War of family members. So I too feel very strongly about this. I was thrilled to see additional involvement. And I know I've been asked several times, what do we do for veterans? What do we do to support our military? This is a fabulous way to do it and I could be more supportive. Good job.
So, yeah, well, basically just asking for us to direct staff to kind of begin the process by creating a committee, which will be involved in planning and continuing and building on the things that we already do for events. We're required to hold at least one a year as a North Dakota C A R S community. And, you know, we'll probably be reaching out to you guys if you have anyone who you think would be good to sit on the committee or if you yourselves want to sit on that committee, we can have, we have to have at least three, but we can add as many as we want. But I think first step is just establishing that committee and then we'll move forward with a resolution probably in a month or so to get the application started.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Jeff, I have a, I have a name right off the top of my head for involvement in that committee and it's one person that had reached out to me previously in your neighborhood that feels very strong. That lady on the corner down in your neighborhood feels very strongly about support for veterans. I would reach out to her for almost, her first tips on this opportunity. I think she would be a fabulous one.
Okay, I can do that.
I'd be willing to serve on the committee if you need people.
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay, well, yeah, I think then I'll probably reach out to you guys tomorrow if this, if that's the action you guys are gonna make of directing us to do that and then we'll get started on this.
I'll go ahead and make that motion then tonight.
All right, I will second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
No, thank you guys for supporting this.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And no opposed, motion carries. All right, number 10, water sewer storm and street ID number 2021-1, Southdale Farms Third Edition, backyard storm sewer. Jim?
Yes, City Council. So we have two things tonight. First is a final review and acceptance. The project is complete, has been reviewed by city staff and is recommending acceptance of the project. Project was completed by Dakota Underground on October, we're accepting it today, October 2nd. So the one-year warranty period starts today. It's just a standard form we have, the ones the city accepts it puts in writing when the warranty starts and then everyone's on the same page of when the project was complete. So, that's the first thing we have. So, any questions on that?
I don't. And this is the one that we're gonna be talking about tomorrow night? The, or at least one of the projects tomorrow night?
Uh, yeah, but, yeah, tomorrow night's a special system, this is...
I understand, but, okay.
Do you want to make a motion on this one or you want to go to the next part?
I think we can do both at the same time, can't we?
Okay. The second, the item you have is the final pay progressive estimate to Dakota Underground in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars eleven cents. This is the final contract, so we, we're, contract was for a hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred forty-six dollars twenty cents. We're a hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred sixty-four eighty, so just a little bit under what our contract price was, so. Came in good on this one.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Okay, then I'll look for a motion to accept both, final review and acceptance and then the progressive estimate.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
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 And none opposed, ten passes. We've already discussed, I think I'll call it 10C earlier tonight. So move on to the engineers.
All right, we'll start south and work our way north. Maybe like the state's contractor has requested that a final walkthrough be completed. There is a couple punch list items that they are still withstanding. I don't know what those are off the top of my head, I just got it on our staff meeting this morning that there's some, a couple punch list items remaining. Rumor has it there's some lots being sold in that phase, so they want to get the builders in there as soon as possible just because of the impending winter. Visto's addition, they were out trimming today. Plan is to pave on Wednesday, weather permitting. I'm not sure. Looked like they backed off the rain on Wednesday, but my computer just told me that there's rain tomorrow. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. So they've got a pretty aggressive schedule they have till, I believe it's three more weeks. So they have to do about two paves a week to get it done within the contract timeline that we agreed upon. So, they've got a pretty aggressive schedule as far as getting that concrete down. Arrowwood Third Edition, we're going through some final items as far as punch lists, some cleanup items. We met with the contractor last Wednesday afternoon to talk about that. Same thing with Chestnut Avenue, we went through that one. The force maintenance is completely installed now, they just have to do some testing on that. There are two areas that are holding water in driveways. We did review those with the contractor and they're going to repair those areas in the Chestnut Drive where they're holding water in the driveways. So, we just have to get that marked here shortly and they'll do that. Center Avenue is, Multimodal is complete. Had a little education through W D A Y last week on the news, so hopefully that can help some people understand that project. The shared use path, they've been working slowly but surely in getting the dirt worked on around the path north of Canal Road Seventeen, uh, Seventy-Sixth Avenue on Canal Road Seventeen. And they got some more seated today, they've just kind of been working in and around the wet of some of the rain, so. Sixty-Sixth Street, all of the concrete pavement is in there, working on the sidewalks right now. They had a little issue last week, which is, they want to slip form pave the sidewalks and the slip form paver is a pretty heavy machine, so they're having some issues with if the subgrain was holding up because they have to straddle the path, so it's not really where it's built up for the path. So, they're working on that, but they did get the tie-in to Seventy-Sixth Avenue done, so that's starting to look good. And that's all the concrete items. As far as roadway, curb and gutter are done south of, just south of Christiansen Boulevard. They're doing the subcut. Last week, the wells are going in for the extension of sanitary sewer on Christiansen Boulevard. Today, if it hadn't gone in yet, and they'll have to pump for seven to 10 days before they can get that sewer in. And that's something we talked about via change order, probably a month or so ago. Wall Avenue, the concrete's down on that, they have their sub in.
Jim, hold on, hold on. Before you go off of Sixty-Sixth, I was just curious, are they still going to try to get the flashing beacons up this year for the crossings across Seventy-Sixth to the school?
Uh, that hasn't, hasn't come up, but I will ask the question, uh, tomorrow morning. Let me make a note here.
I appreciate that. Um, with the opening of that road, there's going to be a lot of use and I want to ensure that those, those safety measures are in place.
Okay. Yep. I will ask the question tomorrow on that.
Forgive the interruption.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Nice to take a break, otherwise I can get going. Um, Wall Avenue East, the concrete pavement is in, working on the driveways and some sidewalks and the shared use path on the south side. There are a couple of utility, um, conflicts that are being resolved as we go. Um, pretty much, they've really put a lot of work into that one in the past month, so it's really looking, looking pretty good along there. So I believe the retaining wall starts this week, but I'm sure that that depends upon the weather too. Their three-week schedule had it this coming week, so. Uh, Wall Avenue West, they were able to get the concrete approach, bridge approach slab in last week. The plan is to get, I believe, I'm gonna tell you southbound, it's probably the south side, but it's probably the north side that they're gonna get done. Probably the north side this week is their plan to start that, take it out to Lost River Road. And then, once they get cure on that, they'll switch over. So, um, I believe it was a Tuesday and a Friday pour or a Wednesday and a Saturday. There's a lot of concrete pours going on to chug all those together. So, uh, the two Southdale Farms, those are both done. Builders are in there working on those. Cup Creek Second Edition, uh, Milestone One, uh, which is basically everything west of Drain Twenty-Seven is all but complete. There's a couple of items as far as dry utilities that were included in our milestone that aren't, aren't done, but it's tough to kind of control those dry utilities. So, um, that project does have a completion date for everything east of the drain to be done by the end of the month. It'd be kind of nip and tuck on that one, but they are putting forth the effort. River's Edge Second Edition was started a week and a half ago. They're working on the deep sewer and most of the underground, so that one has a completion date of late in 2024, but they're aggressively pursuing getting all of the concrete, or all of the underground work done, work done this, uh, this fall yet. And 63rd Street, underground work is done. They're doing subgrade prep and gravel base work this week. Uh, that's another project where the contract was only to have the underground in this year, pave it next year, but if they can get concrete, it looks like they're gonna try to get that one paved this summer or this fall. So that would be quite a bit ahead of schedule if that is the case, so. It's a quick run-through from south to north and west to east of the city.
Question down on, you said Maple Lakes, uh, has a punch list? Did you put in, um, repair on Seventy-Second Street north of Steve Green's driveway there on the west side?
I mentioned it. I'll make a more of a point of it in the morning.
Thank you.
And the same with the Hundred and Second and the Hundred, Hundred and Fourth and Burgundy drainage too. That's something we're looking at. And we used to have some pictures of that, kind of soggy down there, so.
Yeah, I haven't looked down there yet, or I guess since they've paved, have they finished the ditches down there?
Yeah. There's a high spot on one, though that held some water back.
Okay. They've cleaned out the culverts?
Culvert, that's part of the problem too.
Okay. Got it.
So.
Okay.
Jim, quick question for you. Yeah.
Okay.
Has anybody expressed any concern about availability of concrete as we get into the fall here? I'm hearing a, a couple things that, uh, our parking mowers up with dual pours every week down in Visto's.
Yep.
Uh, the concrete that's needed yet for the sidewalks on Sixty-Sixth, those are no little sidewalks. Those are, you know, community pathways. Um, and then obviously this paving. I, I'm just curious if we have any concerns about concrete supply to get us through?
Nothing has been, nothing has been brought up every time I've asked it. Granted, I haven't harped on it. It's been, there is no, no shortage, no issue that they're foreseeing. So we'll see if that holds true, but.
Okay.
At the weekly construction meetings, I will follow up. Yeah.
Yeah, ask the question.
I will.
I'm, I'm hearing some ruffling, so I, I think it might be worth a discussion to just ensure that we have no disruptions at this point.
Makes sense, yep.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, moving on, number 12, city administrator.
Okay. Couple items I have. One, thank you, those that were able to attend League of Cities. Uh, Cory, Jeff, Naomi were able to make it from council. Uh, I think overall it was a pretty good conference there for sessions. I think were a little bit more applicable or helpful for us, um, than sometime, some that we've had in the past. Um, I know a question we've been asked now, we finally got the invoice from Cass County in regards to the recollection. The total bill was eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. Just want to make sure you know what the cost was. Uh, significantly lower than what their estimate was. And we'd estimate it to be lower, but I didn't think it would be that price. So, uh, happy to see it was a lot lower than.
Thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-four thousand. We told them it was really high, but they, uh, still went with that. Anyways, like I said, happy to see that it was a lot less. Um, other news, uh, billing permit data, uh, Keith has generated that for the month of September. Uh, total of thirty-nine new homes in the month of September were issued, or permits, and two twin homes, one commercial. Uh, year-to-date, let's see, at seventy-six residential, single-family homes, eighteen twin homes, makes up a hundred and ninety-four units. So we're talking a house or a half of a twin home there. Uh, twenty-six commercial units. Uh, a lot of that was down in the industrial apartment over by Ubeca. Uh, Visto's is playing in some shop condo type buildings in that area, so they permitted quite a few of those. So that's the majority of those permits, I believe is that, um, if that's correct. Um, but anyways, we, I wouldn't be surprised if we get right around that two-hundred for single-family homes, which honestly, I don't believe is too bad when, given the housing market is not as aggressive or as, uh, aggressive or as many permits this year across the country. So to have two-hundred new homes roughly, you know, just saying ballpark, but around that ballpark is not too bad.
Are the, the shop condos, are they, how are they permitted? I'm just curious. Are they considered residential or?
They'll be industrial.
They're considered industrial?
Yep.
They, they fall under the report as commercial.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering.
Yep. So any commercial could be commercial or industrial if it's in that area, so, yep. Um, and I believe a lot of those are shelling it out and getting it fairly basic.
They're shell up.
They'll like do a remodel to upfit it. Yeah, so they get a tenant for it, so.
Mm-hmm.
And last one, I'll be touching base with Jeff and Cory. We did, um, some more interviews last week for exceptionists, had nine scheduled, two no-shows, seven people were interviewed. So I'll be touching base with Jeff, um, and Cory on those, so, yep. And that's what I have.
Okay. All right, well, do you have anything then for Cory?
I have.
Okay. Uh, so moving along, we'll go to Sarah. Sarah, do you got anything?
Nope. I'm traveling this week, so I don't have anything additional. I will be back, uh, later this weekend. I'll have an update for next time.
Okay. Naomi?
Uh, like Brenton mentioned, went out to Bismarck for the League of Cities Conference. Um, sat in on a few planning and zoning topics since that is my portfolio. It was pretty interesting. Um, learned a lot there. And, um, I don't know, just recently had a meeting with Jace to discuss a few things, um, but just chugging along, I guess. That's about it.
Okay.
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, for me, obviously I went out to, uh, Bismarck as well. Uh, did get your email, Jace. Um, pick a time later this week. Yeah. Not, not, not tomorrow or Wednesday, but you know, Thursday or Friday, pick a time. Uh, other than that, uh, had a MetroCug meeting today. There wasn't too much discussed on that. Um, one of the topics had to do with, uh, the railroad, which we don't really have a railroad anymore. And, um, one of the other topics was something that was previously discussed, uh, multiple times in many meetings ago, uh, just the organization layout for, um, when we do actually convert over, um, to our transit authority.